To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary Tenor Roll Call?
Hall number one, Dave Beal.
And Pat.
Pat.
Excuse.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
All right, we have some students to honor. So we will start with Callan Demice. Please come up with your family and receive your honor.
Right in front.
I'm going to give this to you, Callan, and this to you.
Oh, thanks. I am going to read what your teachers wrote about your wedding nominated you for this recognition. It says, "Callan Demice is the star of the month. He's a great example of what it means to follow the way of the wolves. He is respectful and kind to his peers and teachers. He is always willing to help others and shows responsibility in his words and actions. He is an excellent classmate and student as well as a great leader and role model. So congratulations."
Yes. So turn that around so it shows up in the picture. There you go.
Perfect.
All right. Okay, and next we have Emily Miller. Emily, come with family, please.
Lots of good stuff, do you know you too? So Emily is January's bright spot of the month nominated by the CTE Department for her technical qualification. She has participated in many CTE courses during her high school career and this year has enrolled in the early childhood education class. Her passion, energy, and compassion for others is evident, especially in the activities she creates and interactions with others. She puts this energy into everything from lessons she prepares to the bulletin boards she designs to interactions she has with the elementary students. This is also seen outside of the classroom. Emily is a wolf hiker for two pups at the elementary school and also works after school at the child here at Saint Paul's School. She makes an important impact on all the young children she works with. Emily plans to attend DWTB for elementary education next fall and be excited to watch this wonderful teacher.
Excellent. And last but not least, Ashlyn Anderson, who wasn't able to join us last round. Please come on up.
There you go. That's a good stuff for you too. Ashlyn, December bright spot of the month for the math department. Ashlyn has shown excellent success in math over the past four years and has been a shining star in calculus this year. Her analytic abilities have allowed her to quickly figure out new concepts at a high level of reasoning. Ashlyn is also an effective leader. First, she holds herself to a high standard. Second, she wants others in her sphere of influence to achieve at a high level. A fine example of this is the work she does in the musical where she helps create and learn reasonable choreography and teaches it to the other students involved. She shows great empathy by being patient and giving her extra help to those who struggle to learn.
Please, please fill the gap, thank you.
All right, ready? One, two, three.
All right, well, thank you and congratulations again to all of our honorees. And you certainly can stay, but you are also excused if you would like to leave. All right, under special presentations, we have the McKinstry presentation. So you're going to turn up the phone?
Can you see that okay? Yes, I can. I don't know where the best spot could be here is, but.
Before you, you guys also do have a copy of the presentation in my packet I handed you. So each month along or at different times, do you actually have a copy of the presentation?
So it's been a while, and again, my name is Peter Barr and I come and tech with McKinstry and a couple other cohorts here. So Alan Ward's a project director, so he's, he and his team are pulling all the information together and working with contractors and all of that. So we're going to give you kind of an update on where we are in the process. And Nick Awish is our business manager for the region. So they'll be jumping in whenever it's relevant. So again, kind of just giving you a little background. So again, how we started the process is, you know, obviously Jason kind of identified that there's a big gap in the energy spend. If we look at that far right column, the cost per square foot between the high school, middle school, and the elementary school. So it was, it was pretty apparent that there's, there's an opportunity in the upgrades you had done years back at the elementary school were paying off, and there's opportunity for improvement here at the high school, middle school. So that's kind of what got us going and certainly different things to look at. And so by taking a proactive approach and addressing some of those needs, I mean, obviously you want to focus on the learning environment, that's the number one thing, and using future energy savings to pay for some of these upgrades because they will generate energy savings. There are utility rebates, we'll get into a little bit of that too. So, and addressing those issues, you know, proactive matters so that it doesn't fail during the school year, you don't end up making replacement. Obviously costs are higher if you've got to do it on an emergency kind of basis. So taking a proactive approach is kind of what we're trying to do here. Looking at all of your systems and all the facilities and prioritizing your needs. You guys are good at the bottom, I guess the whole point of the chart on the bottom is as a district, you're, you're good compared to the other districts in the state. And, and we think making these changes just, just improves that that much more, so. So this is a little bit about the timeline. You can see here that on the, the checkboxes on the left-hand side. So in January, on the 23rd and 27th, we had contractor walkthroughs. So the contractors came in, the bids were due from the contractors on the 13th, and on the 17th, we started, you know, kind of assembling that information and it's, as we're designing and looking at the options as far as what costs look like and those kinds of things. Gets us to the board meeting today. That's, we're kind of in the middle because we're still not done with that analysis. So once we're done with that analysis, if you look to the next step down, client design and approval. So we'll be meeting with Nick and Jason to kind of say, okay, here's, here are the options that you have, here's, here's kind of what a base design is and, and how do you want to proceed with that? So the point today is to get approvals for that when we're done with that in the next couple of weeks. You know, they, you know, potentially could proceed, you know, with what, you know, what guidelines you put in place here tonight, so. Then in March to May, so here's where the timing kind of comes in. You know, in March to May, we want to start, we want to award contracts in, in March to the subcontractors. And then in, and then in there in March to May, then they can start procuring material so that they're ready. So as soon as school is done, you can start work because we're always in a tight window to try and get work done during the short summer period. And so that's kind of shows August, September completion of the major construction work so it doesn't interfere with school. And then there'll be a little work that can't, can't be completed until the weather gets cold again. So you can't really test the boilers and some of those kinds of things. So there'll be a little, but that's all kind of behind the scenes type work. Stuff in the boiler room, doesn't affect school, any of those kinds of things. Any questions on timeline? So just looking at the project outline again, so kind of broken into three different improvement buckets. So kind of the energy and operational, that's the boilers, the controls, domestic hot water, the roofing upgrades, there's three priority sections or three worst sections of roof, and then the solar volcanic system. So those, those are the three different areas to consider. Again, there's energy and operational savings and, and those will, and capital cost avoidance type items which will go to directly to fund ten relief. So utility rebates again, and we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about those. So just looking at, at some of these again, the boiler plant, replacing the boilers and the boiler systems, so the pumps and the, and the ancillary type equipment with the boilers. The temperature control system, so upgrading the temperature control system from that old pneumatic system to a fully digital system which will match what you have at the elementary school. Some window replacements, they're not full replacements, probably categorized as window repairs.
Yeah, I would call them like components. There's like sashes and things of nature. We're not actually replacing the glass itself. It's just parts of the frame that are starting to deteriorate just based on moisture and issues. So it's replacing those components, not the entire window.
And the domestic hot water system. So that's kind of in a nutshell. We can certainly go into detail, we talked a little bit about those previously. Again, we'll have some more information to review on the specifics when we can be with Jason and Nick to kind of go through those. The solar volcanic, photovoltaic system, so we had several options, we're kind of looking at a ground mounted insulation. If you look at this, that's where it would go in relation to the school. It's a great location for a solar system, it's on the south side of the building. You get away with, away from some of the issues with a roof mounted system because a roof mounted system, if you've got to replace the roof, make a repair on the roof, it's not impossible, it's just, it's just an added kind of thing to deal with. So you have a great location and again, nothing across the street, get a blockhead, trees, things like that, so it's, it's a good location. If you look at the sizing, so that's, it's sized to be 40% of the total demand or the total demand of the school from an electrical standpoint for a year, so. Little bit about that. Any questions on the details there before we kind of step in? So this is just a little bit about the process, right? So we're in the middle, we're kind of where the red arrow there in the process. So we started by engineering different solutions for the different things, different things for contractors to consider when they were bidding. Developed the specifications for those different bid packages, walked the contractors through, obviously got the bids. So right now, we're in that section where we're still identifying, reviewing the scope of work, so we're interviewing all of those contractors that bid, making sure their scope of work is, we understand both what we're looking for, what they're delivering, identify risk items, looking for areas that we can save money based on things that they see and incorporating that in the design. And so once we have that confirmed, then we meet, you know, internally with the school here and say, okay, here's, here's what the system looks like, here's what options, here's what contractors, all of that. Next step would be to establish safety plans and the performance expectations for all of them. McKinstry has an extensive safety program that we require all of our subcontractors to follow, pretty rigorous program. And then award the subcontracts. So we're hoping to have all of that completed by the end of March, so awarding those subcontracts by the end of March. And again, that, then, then they're not, you know, hindered in going out and procuring material and buying and, and planning labor for the summer, that, those sorts of things. So this is just to give you a sense of the contractors, so there's different categories of work. So these are some of the mechanical categories. So there's equipments, equipment suppliers on the top, different mechanical contractors, controls contractors. So there's a lot of them, we invited them, so we got majority participation, so we got good participation from the contractors. One thing that we were kind of pushing the timeline is we wanted to go early so that we would get good participation and get good bids. If you wait, closer to summer you get, contractors are busy, you don't necessarily need to work and they bid it higher and those kinds of things. So, so that's, that's a look at some of those. These are some of the electrical contractors, roofing contractors, general contractors. So again, so we're in the process of doing those interviews and, and betting, betting those different contractors. So again, brings us back to basically what we're here. Again, it's, it's, there's good projects, there's a good financial return. We think it'll take the district from, from good on an energy standpoint and a, and a just a deferred maintenance kind of standpoint because it allows you to address a lot of deferred maintenance type items, those kinds of things. So, so anyway, so tonight, the point, you know, is really, you know, obviously you guys have that in front of you for, for both, so. Any questions? I think, I think we gave you a copy of the solar proposal too, so there's some, there's some good detail in there, I mean, if you were, if you could look at it, but, you know, all the component, you know, different things about the different components and things like that.
I just wanted to verify that the domestic hot water is separate from the boiler and it'll be up and running in when the fall semester begins? And the, the tweaks on the boilers have nothing to do with that, there's totally separate systems?
Yeah, two, two different systems, yes.
Yeah, they're, exactly. The boilers are only used for hydronic heating for the HVAC, not for the domestic hot water. It's a separate system. Yeah, the timeline is to the domestic hot water heaters during the summer so that when students come back.
That was the only question I had when you said we've got a few things that we have to do in the September timeframe.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All had to do with the boiler. Okay, good.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that was referring to the boiler, the hot water boiler system. Right.
So the design approval, is that something that the building committee needs to be involved in?
I think we can certainly add them and when we're in that process, include them. I don't think we're hiding anything, I mean, it's all very transparent and we had good discussion before on it, so when we get to the point of, you know, A, B, C, D, E, if you will, we can certainly include the building grounds committee.
What do you think, Dave? Are you there, Dave?
Yeah, I'm, I'm there. I think we should be involved with it.
Yeah, that's, okay. All right, that's what I was thinking too.
Why would you have a building and grounds committee?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it'll be kind of a working session, you know, I mean, looking at different options and, yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
Okay. So McKinstry, if you can tell us a little bit about, so with the energy upgrades and that kind of stuff, how does your part play in with the, I guess, I'll say guaranteeing the performance of our systems?
Yeah, so, so we'll have, we'll have a guarantee from an energy standpoint and, and then we've got that we'll monitor that to verify that, that you're saving that much energy. We guarantee that you're going to save it. So that'll be stipulated, I mean, it, it relates somewhat to the, the design, so as we go through and we pick a final solution, that kind of affects what the payback criteria or the, the guarantee looks like. So once we do that, then, yeah, then the guarantee is there. And then we work with you throughout the year to make sure that you're meeting those, those energy savings, so. And if you don't, then we basically create a difference, so.
Oh. Okay.
And all the subcontractors, Peter, I mean, we will go through that and if the building and grounds committee or the board says we would like to proceed with X contractor over another one, we hold the right to, to pick the contractor of our choice.
Yeah, sure, yeah, yeah. And, you know, when we go through, we, we pick, I mean, most of these guys we've worked with throughout the years, so we're comfortable with them to begin with, but yeah.
Absolutely.
And Nick, our own team will qualify those contractors too, you know, just to make sure they can complete the project in the summer timeframe, so. So he's already done some of that, most of the people that responded were responsible. Sometimes we get a smaller contractor who thinks they can take it on and it's him and his wife and they can't quite finish it over the summer, you know, so.
Yep. Well, that's the reason why I asked the question, and I think, I mean, we're in a small rural community, some of this stuff, you simply don't have these contractors. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the board and the building and grounds committee, we're all going to look at that and obviously those working relationships mean a lot to us. Some of those contractors we've worked with for years, others we haven't. So that's why I just wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page about, we have, that's kind of our say on who we get to do our work.
They came up at Southern Door too, did their project, you know, just.
Then if you can speak to how you, I guess, how you make sure that these contractors are going to perform what they say they're going to perform? So Peter's telling me about, you know, the interview process after the bid.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's a, a great, because, you know, we're only as good as our subcontractors. And we want to make sure that, you know, we're vendor neutral, so we, you know, I, I put together a list of subcontractors, reviewed it with Jason, said, hey, here's one that we want to invite to the project. So the way the process goes is I did a RFP, gave them three weeks, we brought them outside, gave them three weeks to, to put their responses together. After they put their responses together, I sit down with each one of those guys and I basically put minutes together from the meeting so that we, everyone knows exactly what we went through, make sure everything is crystal clear on the RFP documents, if they have any questions. And then basically they sign that document. Once they sign that document, now we have, we can sit there and, and have that discussion of, all right, here's how they fall in the order, here's the lowest qualified subcontractor, do you want to go with that guy or do you want to go to the next? But basically, like I said, is, is we, we want a very ethical process, we want to, we, you know, one of the things we wanted to push early because as Peter mentioned earlier, the longer you wait into the summer, contractors fill up, they'll take on the work, but you know what, you're going to pay a little bit more for that. So, so we're in a good spot, so as we start proceeding on here, we want to start locking these contractors in. And then the next thing is, is that, you know, we have our operations team, so we, we have a milestone schedule we put together that kind of lays down the day-to-day activities even from this point. And in that milestone schedule, you know, it starts out as Peter kind of showed the high level here, we still have to do the design. The design is not, I mean, we have our own in-house designers, engineers and stuff that put the design together, but what we really want to be is a consultant to you guys, here's what we recommend, what is your thoughts? It's a collaborative process. So we have design reviews at, at very specific times, typically at 35% complete drawings. So when the drawings are, they just started, it's very conceptual, we sit down and say, all right, here's what we're thinking we're doing, are we still in line, are we meeting the district's initiatives? Then we have that same meeting again at 65% complete. We have all the team members involved at those, in this case it would be your facilities, Jason, Nick, you know, anyone on your side. We also bring the contractors in that we're planning on using because again, McKinstry's doing the design, they're doing the implementation. What we don't want to happen is the designers say, well, this works great on paper, but it doesn't work in the field. So we get all that, that input and we go through these at very specific times, 35, 65, then we do it again at 90 to 95% complete. Why we do it at that point is that's kind of the final, the final piece, we close it up, and then we submit those off to state approval for, as, as, as approval from the state for the mechanical system. Once we get all that back, then we, we review the, the installation schedule, bring all the guys, we have a kickoff meeting, and as Peter said, we're very stringent on safety. I wouldn't be surprised if our safety plan is more stringent than your safety plan because again, we want to make sure that all of our guys go home at the end of every day. So we'll have a, a pre-construction kickoff, go through the safety, introduce them to the site, and then we start having weekly meetings throughout the construction period to make sure that we stay on schedule. If we start to go off schedule, we start looking at recoveries and, and that typically means second shift. At no time is that additional burden on you guys, that's all on us.
Okay, I was going to ask, so you're, you're in charge of basically making sure that all the timelines and, and milestones are met?
Absolutely, and, and we know that you have summer school, we know it's only one day in the, in the library, or I mean, it's in one classroom in the library, we work around that. You know, we, we get all your input, it's all into our milestone schedule and we, you know, it's easy to see where things are at at each, each step, and we know that, hey, we have this window to get it done.
Madam President?
Yes.
What you guys watch over that if they run into something that wasn't anticipated and now they got to do it and they, do they have to include that in the bid or do they add that onto the bid? And if they add it onto the bid, do you make sure that it's competitive?
So that's, that's a great question because there's certain things that you're going to be able to see about. So when we bring the contractors out here, there's certain things that we can see without doing a destructive analysis, without taking something all the way to part, opening it up and saying, oh, I see how that is, now, now put it together. So there are certain things that we look at, we try to mitigate risk. And so a lot of times during the qualifications, you know, with the subcontractors, what are your risks? One of the risk items are, you have tunnels. A lot of the areas, the pipes are served to the, to the terminal units in the tunnel space. Why that's a risk item is, is that, well, if people have to go into those tunnels, there's a safety plan associated with that. We looked at this, most of the work, we're pretty confident that, you know, we opened up univentilators, there's enough room in there because one of the things that we want to do is get control over all your unit, unit ventilators, all these, so we want to add control valves. A lot of that work can happen up above, but we may have to go down into the tunnels. We carry that risk. So there's a certain portion that we're going to allocate, let's call it contingency, that we're going to say, hey, we have these risk items, I'm going to carry contingency to help cover them because I don't know what the real cost is until we dive in there. But what I can do is I can tell you, based on historical data, this is what we ran into in the past, this is roughly how it costs. In addition to that, on our RFP documents, we actually have a page that the subcontractor fills out. Any extra work is pre-agreed upon terms and conditions. So there's no chance for a guy to come back or a contractor to come back and say, well, here's a change where instead of, I'm, I'm going to make it whatever I want, they, they're set dollar amounts. And, and again, we try to make this collaborative between the subcontractors and ourselves because we're only as good as our contractors. So we want to make sure we have a healthy relationship with them, so we want to protect them, we want to protect us, we want to protect you guys.
In the walkthrough, did you identify any materials that may require hazardous material manifesting?
Yeah.
And is that baked into the, into the costs?
So, so one of the things that is required is you guys have what's called an AIRA study. Every three years, you have, you have to do a, a report. And that's where you have a consultant comes in there and identifies and how to, everything that we looked at in that report has already been taken care of. So that's a risk item that we're, that we addressed, we looked at, and we didn't see that that's a risk, current risk as we stand.
And none of the activity will disturb what's already in place?
Correct, correct. Anything that gets disturbed has to be addressed.
And have you identified the staging areas you're going to use for materials and equipment?
Absolutely. One of the nice things is, is that the way, the way your building is oriented, the boiler room right back here, right around the corner is access doors to bring stuff in, double set of doors. The boilers nowadays, if you went in your boiler room right now, you have three Burnham boilers, big old massive boilers. The new ones can almost fit through a door that size. I mean, it's a little bit of exaggeration, but not much wider than that door. So we have access to get the equipment in and access to take the, the demo stuff out. You know, and that, which brings another point is, is that, you know, we talk about salvage, you know, you know, when we tear apart these old equipment, you know, sometimes, I mean, there's certain things, wire and stuff, copper and different things that can be recycled. Typically, you know, we'll bring that to your attention, but typically how we handle that is, is that we try to give that back to subcontractors so when they, doing the demo, they're recycling things, they get the money back, and that makes them competitive, they take it off their bid. So unless there's a piece of equipment that Paul or someone says, God, I'd like to have that, hold on to that for whatever reason, you know, we can, we can say, yeah, all right, school, let us know where you want us to set it, we'll pull it out, set it here, your responsibility. Otherwise, we take care of all the demo, recycling, everything.
Okay, any further questions?
I can just add one more thing?
Yeah.
What do you guys talk about the cost of, well, with the solar, what's our payback looking like? And what's like the life expectancy of a project like that?
Yeah, that's, do you want me to start?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, yeah, when you look at any of these projects, it's bottom line comes back to ROI. You know, everything is either political, financial, technical, or emotional, it kind of comes into the decision. So when we look at solar sys, solar, photovoltaic, solar generation, really you start to look at, depending on the system that you're going at, you're typically looking at 25, 30 years, you know, different components of that system have different lengths of life, just like on, on anything, your vehicle, your equipment, you know, everything. But on, on the, on the systems, typically they're 30-plus years on the components.
I think the paybacks are on there, I, I want to say it's 15, I don't remember exactly. Yeah, it's 15.9.
15.9 years?
Yeah. So after the fifteen point nine years, obviously that means we're basically looking at recovering our entire costs there. Did you have a nice little breakdown on what we also save with electricity? So obviously start with that initial cost, but then you can sort of see how it breaks down each year where the cost becomes less and less.
So when we, we started the process last fall, so the utilities give a rebate, but they change their rebate programs every year. And so when we started it, the first iteration, we were using the twenty nineteen rebate calculation. And it was significantly more, it was almost double, I think, from what it ended up being for twenty twenty. And so that's an indication for the utilities, they use those incentives, those rebates to incentivize people to do things they wouldn't do otherwise, make it financially viable. So it's just an indication of solar is becoming much more universal. You know, people are, you know, gravitating towards that. We're doing a lot of pro, projects with solar arrays. And so it's just becoming more mainstream. So they're not offering as much money and that trend will probably continue. But anyway, so the, the numbers that I came.
So these are the twenty twenty numbers.
Those are twenty twenty. And you guys are, because of Algoa Utilities, you guys are, you get two rebates. So We Energies, or, or, I'm not.
W P P I.
Focus on Energy and then W P P I are the two. So, you know, many areas, they just have Focus, they don't have the W P P I. So, so anyway, it's a good.
And one thing that we did do is, is that, so the W P P I, their, their rebate is based on, they have a strict budget. So they have guidelines that fill out the applications. We actually assisted with submitting the application so that at least you guys can get in there and be considered for the project. Now, after that initial go-around, they have round one. If all that money gets spent, the project stops at that point. You mean, you know, they're already committed. So they're going to go through round one and they're going to make a selection. I believe they have a hundred thousand dollars available for rebates or grants, let's call it, for these types of systems. Once that hundred thousand gets spent, now you're looking, I mean, that's all at this time. So we went ahead to help in case if this comes to fruition, to secure that so that you guys are considered for that. And that's, that was actually a significant portion of the financial. As Peter said, Focus on Energy, the state, energy efficiency program also has some, but not quite as great as the grant through W P P I.
Okay. So time is of the essence a little bit on that.
Well, yeah, because as you can see, the trend is being less and less. So basically, the support for solar and that type of thing is going to become less and less every year. So.
What's the principal maintenance on a solar array?
Yeah, so the, the good things, there's a lot of things you don't want to do that maybe don't make, quite, quite make sense. Like, for instance, if, if the, if the rays covered in snow, you might think, well, you know what? I can't generate because the snow's blocking it, I should just wipe it up. You don't want to do that. Let it, let it, let it melt naturally. So you don't want to do anything where you're, you know, hitting these, pushing these and, and things like that, you know. So it's more of, you just let the system run by itself. Really, the real maintenance comes into your inverters. You know, that's what's basically generating, I mean, the rays are generating the power, it's going to the inverters and converting it over to usable power. So that's where you're going to do your maintenance. And so there's going to be prescribed maintenance that you're checking. A lot of time with, with these systems, you're also going to have a data acquisition system. It's just like that computer on your, your car that says, need to change oil now or your air tires are low. It's going to give you some routine maintenance and it's going to tell you when things are up. You're going to see on how the system is performing, when all of a sudden you see there's a drop off, then you're going to say, hey, we need to take a look at this and so forth. So there is going to be some prescribed maintenance that we can go through, you know, with the system. But it really depends on what are all the components that you're going into the system are to, to properly, you know, answer that. Does that make sense?
Yes, does it take a trained and certified technician in order to perform that maintenance? Or would that be something you would expect school district staff to perform?
Yeah, so, and that's, that's a great, you know, with all these projects, at the end of the project, we're going to offer training on the, on the, on the systems. We're all going to talk about, this is what the training looks like, here's how you perform the training. What we do is we actually photo or video those trainings so that if you ever have a new staff member come on and, and so forth, or if they just need a refresher, you can just put your flash drive in the computer and watch that video over again. It's just like a YouTube video that we basically create on the training. So each person is going to be trained, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll actually have the training. You let us know who you want to be at the training and we can train that person specific, or we just do it as, as a video that we turn over to the district.
A volunteer for not brushing the snow off the hands.
Yes, right. Well, and, and that's, and the reason why I say that is, is that when we go in and we do the engineering on these systems, we assume that, you know, it's probably eight percent, what we call soiling, is going to be snow covered throughout the year. So when we come up with, when we built this report, you know, if, let's say if you had a really poor snow, you didn't snow that much, your production's going to be much greater than what we're showing on, on paper. We have to take in consideration cloud cover, snow cover, different things. And so it's already been dereg, deregulated, regulated or, or broken down where we're, we're, we're not taking the full potential savings. We're already lowering down based on, we know you're going to have some cloudy days, it's going to be some days, the sun's just not going to come out, it's going to be covered in snow and stuff. So what you see is, is already has that kind of historical data. And that's all based on like, I believe it's N R E L, you know, limits and so forth for that, you know. So, so, yeah, it's all taken in consideration.
Jason, do you have any more questions? All right.
Next, as you guys said, Jason can do the maintenance on the solar.
Other duties as assigned. It's a good line.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, well, Pat is not here to give us board correspondent report. Nick, board CISA report.
Well, you know, actually I joined her for ten days on Florida, so I didn't get to the meeting, so.
Yeah, you look.
I just got nothing to say.
You looked down, so, yes, good for you. Citizens delegation to be heard, anyone sign in? All right, student representative report, Colleen.
Basketball season is coming to a close and the teams are soon entering the playoffs. The boys have a game tonight at Surgen Bay and two more at the end of this week. Their playoff game is at Cedar Grove Belgium on March third. The girls have their playoff game tomorrow at Kohler. The track, the track, baseball and softball seasons will start up shortly after basketball is over, with the spring sports meeting on March second. On March ninth, from three thirty to five, I'm going to finish from Bellin will be giving a presentation and demonstrating hands-on blue prep. All athletes and students are encouraged to attend. Musical season is going well and the performances are on March thirteenth at seven PM and March fourteenth at two PM and seven PM. The D I regionals are taking place here this Saturday.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Why didn't you say those performances were the thirteenth and the fourteenth?
Yeah, the thirteenth at seven PM and the fourteenth at two and seven.
Thank you.
Is this the first time we've hosted the D A?
D I?
D I, I mean.
Yeah. I was like.
Behave, yeah. That's the troll with acronyms, you know. Okay, well, that's exciting. That should be a busy, active day here.
Great.
Thank you, Colleen. All right, under board president announcements, I would just like to remind the community that we are very open and responsive to any questions. We're a very transparent community. And, I mean, to the community, as far as a district, we are always going to consider any reasonable question. We have budget hearings for anyone who wants to come and, and hear in detail our entire budget, every line. If you have questions throughout the year, we have a structure where you start with the teachers and then the building administrators. And then if your concerns or questions continue, you can come to the board. What we do not respond to are anything that comes to us that is unsigned. Because we never will and we never have. In fact, basically, our policy is if we get letters, which we occasionally do, directed directly to the board members at our homes, if I look at the letter and it is not signed with people's names, where we have the opportunity to get more information and to respond to them, I don't even read it. And I think that is probably the best policy for all of us. Because like I said, any reasonable concern, we are open to and want to give the information back to the community if they're concerned about our decisions on, on our use of their tax money. We are very careful in terms of our, our money. We are a very frugal district. We have one of the best even tax rates from year to year. And like I said, we are open, transparent and available. But there are processes that we need to go through and always will use those processes. So with that said.
I just mentioned this event that was on Saturday night. Dave Robertson was responsible for putting this together. So anybody who attended certainly had a very enjoyable evening. So thank you, David, for doing all that work.
That was the double panel?
Yeah, the double grand night at the P A C.
Yeah, that, I wish I could have gone because I bet that was spectacular.
It was a good, good sized audience group too, so it was nice.
It was very good.
Good. All right, moving on to administration reports.
I'll start with my wellness center update. Zach tells me that they are going to hire Nick Schrader as their center desk staff. We have a long history of having high school students work at the desk in the wellness center. Nick is obviously next in line and do a great job. Door County Medical Center is bringing in speakers for our joyous joints chair exercise class. February twenty-sixth is talking about the coronavirus and March twentieth is talking about ensuring healthy joints. Lifeline screening is coming to the center February twenty-ninth and lots of community members already signed up for that one. And the last winter market is set for March fifteenth. And then his last line is that the general statement of the center's been getting a ton of use, even more so than last winter. Total membership now hovering around four hundred and sixty members, not including staff or high school students. It's pretty impressive for a small community. Colleen did a great job with the P A C events, with the musicals, so we got those. March thirteenth, seven PM, March fourteenth, two PM and seven PM. Next on my list is scheduling night. We moved scheduling night back due to a conflict this year, it'll be on March eighteenth. Lots of effort goes into scheduling night. Obviously, we want to give our students the most opportunities that we possibly can afford them. And I think when all of our teachers and staff members and programs and partners can be at one event, it gives the opportunity to the students and their family to ask questions about what they can schedule for the next year. It's really been a wonderful kind of switch away from parent-teacher conferences to a scheduling night where has far greater impact on students and at this building. Spring assessment schedule, you can't go spring in Wisconsin without spending a lot of time testing. So we have a testing schedule for everyone to see. You can see that ACT testing, March third, obviously, one of the kind of core tenants of testing now. They did take away the work keys part of that, so it's just one day now, not two days, which is helpful. We will allow those students to leave after that. So they don't have to go to classes after they just fried their brain on the ACT. But you can see the forward testing for seventh, eighth, tenth graders, basically a week long. And then you can see on the back, the aspire testing for freshmen and sophomores, again, another week worth of testing. So I'm hoping at some point in the near future that the state figures out that this doesn't allow anybody to learn.
Yeah, we lose a lot of teaching time.
A lot.
When we're doing all these standardized tests.
So.
And don't get a whole lot of information back from them.
That is correct, especially when some, most major entities are not even asking for those test results anymore. It's really difficult to put kids in that situation and then tell them, do your best, but nobody's going to ask you for that. So I don't know why we're fixated on, on that, so.
Maybe that could be a resolution.
I think, honestly, I think it's actually slowly changing. You don't hear nearly the banter you used to hear about it. If you remember, three years ago, we had forty-five days worth of testing.
True.
So now it's, it's much less. However, I think there's still a long way to go. And I think there's so many different ways that we can illustrate to our communities on the impact that our schools have and what kids are learning and how active they are. Just had a lengthy meeting with our CISA six, they coordinate all the C T E stuff in our region. I mean, all the great stuff that is happening in, in that cross sector is not even part of any of our reporting. So that is stuff that we need to, to get out to our communities. And we, we will with our, doing what matters.
These standardized tests were brought about by legislative action, is that correct? And the legislative action from the state of Wisconsin, are they looking to somehow use these test results to prove to the federal government? And that there is, there are dollars tied to that in terms of performance on these tests?
Well, I think for the, certainly the ACT suite, that was all kind of lumped together with the federal government trying to get a universal approach, which now you're getting kind of some resistance. I wouldn't say resistance, but people are just not using that anymore. And I think states are saying, well, we can't, we can't just throw this away because this is multi-multi-million dollar entity, you know, thing for the, for the state. So I don't necessarily know that today it's about money. I think initially it was a lot about money because it was tied to, yes, not E S E A, but.
E S S A.
Yeah, one of the acronyms. Basically, the second coming of the child at behind, right, where accountability was, we have to have this, we have to have this data for the school report cards. And that's where the impetus came for the forty-five days worth of testing. But now that has gone away. So I don't see, I don't see a push from the federal government for it. I, I see states trying to get away from it as fast as they can, but I don't think they can just draw the line in the sand and say, we're not doing this anymore. But that's, that's the slow progression from forty-five to fifteen.
But as far as I know, there's been no effort at all to reduce the amount of testing, even on a prototype basis that the, the state is exploring. And usually, if you don't have something like that, you'll never get rid of this and it'll be a lifetime employment for the testing companies.
Well, I agree with that.
At one time, you know, the ACT was only given, you know, voluntarily to students who thought they might be college bound. And to see this as being a standardized test given to everyone.
Never the intent.
No.
It's never, was never the intent, it's being subverted in its purpose. And I, I'm not sure why we are subtracting teacher classroom time in favor of this. And maybe we need to talk with someone who's on the Blue Ribbon Committee and a former board president himself. Regarding us.
Which I think many of them understand that now.
Yes.
And I think, my hope is that we can get to a point where we can, here, here's the platform, here's how we're going to look at schools and view schools. And it won't have, I caution myself to say, any, but very, very limited standard, standardized testing. I don't, I don't like the broad brush approach to it. Because if you have to proctor that ACT with this year forty-five very disgruntled juniors who are not all, you know, going to use that, you can see that this is not a productive use of our time.
Well, even at the convention, the speakers, the keynote speakers. Well, even at the convention, the speakers, the keynote speakers, I mean, the general sentiment is that this is not effective.
It's much like the G R E, right? So many people to get a master's degree program, doctoral programs, G R E. And then all of a sudden, that all just kind of went away because they're realizing that a G R E score is not a predictor of success in any one of those programs. It was a select and sort methodology that they were using to, you know.
It also sort of assumed that you were going directly from your baccalaureate degree to a master's program. And all of that stuff was fresh as opposed to graduating, going into the workforce, and maybe eight to ten years later, exploring, you know, getting your master's degree. And now you have this quick hustle to remember everything you've probably have forgotten because you studied for it. So you could pass a test before.
And no value added to show the experience that you would bring to it. So, yeah. Alright. Anything more to say about spring assessment? Alright, we will move on to Katie, principal's report.
Alright. Linda Lebat earlier this month coordinated a really awesome opportunity for our students at the elementary school. Each of the classrooms had a chance to learn some self-defense skills. She brought in a group called Total Defense out of Green Bay. And they do a school program completely free of charge because they believe in the mission of it so much. They really focused at the elementary level on self-defense as a last resort. They talk a lot about being an active engager in your surroundings. They talk about teaching the kids how to use their voice to kind of assert what their needs are. And then they also talk about how a student can get to a safe space if they're feeling like the environment that they're in is not safe. And then as a last resort, there was a little bit on some actual self-defense skills that the students could take, could practice and learn. So all students in grades two through six participated in that. They also held a family fun night on February seventh, which was also really well attended. And then kind of a nice surprise, on Friday afternoon, the two that ran the program stopped by the elementary school as a surprise to present Linda with her very own white belt. So she has no, a white belt in her shorts. So that was kind of cool. And Linda Lebat and I talked a little bit about how we can continue with this next year, you know, in a similar capacity, but just to keep it fresh in the students' minds. But I really appreciate, I really appreciated the proactive skills that were touched upon to, you know, especially the confidence piece for kids because I think that's definitely a huge piece in kind of approaching conflict. Also, recent this month, some students of ours in Lindsay Harmon's sixth grade homeroom have, have kind of embarked on a personal development leadership series with Jamie Spitzer from Precision Machine. He's been coming in every Wednesday or once a week and kind of leading the students through some different kinds of exercises that involve them kind of building some self-awareness into who they are, their strengths, their weaknesses, and then how they can build off of those weaknesses to be the best version of themselves. As a result of that, we also started an opportunity for staff at the elementary school. Our first session was tonight, actually, after school. Kind of a similar tone to it, but basically learning more about ourselves so that we can better work and lead together for the betterment of our school and our students. So that'll continue on for quite a few weeks. And it's something different that we haven't really talked about before, but I think, you know, as educators, we're often in a role where we, you know, place everyone else's needs in front of our own and, you know, making sure that we're taking time to come back together and as adults and professionals, connect on a, on a different level than just the professional setting. So I'm really excited to see where that takes us. And then lastly, this week Thursday, we will be taking an almost all-school field trip to U W G B. There, they've invited schools and students from the area to attend the women's basketball game at eleven o'clock. And we have our students, first grade through sixth grade, who will be attending. So Oklahoma will be very well represented. We have three hundred and sixty tickets. So that includes students, staff, and then a bunch of chaperones for our younger grades. But it's a really awesome opportunity. We were approached by U W G B. They are offering the tickets free of charge. They're offering the transportation on them. So we are gonna basically go and have a really great time and support the team. So really excited.
That, that sounds wonderful. Is there going to be any opportunity for them to look at any other parts of the campus?
Briefly, yes. Anna Dear, who's a former student, she's gonna be speaking with the group in another part of the, we're gonna pretty much stay in the Crest Center. There's about two thousand students total who will be there. So we don't wanna necessarily wander too far from the path. But she, we're trying to figure out when, either before the game or after the game, she'll be able to talk with us a little bit on persistency, maybe some adversity that she faced in her basketball career. She's also studying to go into education, so kind of that her take on that as well. But we're not sure which grade levels yet. We don't know if that would be appropriate for three hundred and sixty of us. I don't know how effective that would be, but we'll see. So it'd be a good opportunity.
Excellent. What a wonderful opportunity.
Yeah. And a great price.
Absolutely.
Yes, Barb had a great price.
Okay, business managers, finance bulletin report.
So obviously, with these projects coming up and that kind of stuff, we're looking at, um, we can be able to fund them. So I sort of wrote down on my vision for funding and that type of stuff. Just so that you guys have an idea of where the money's coming from, where we're at financially, if you do these projects, that type of thing. So just to give a little background, our Fund Ten balance, so that's our working capital. So that is our fund balance. Generally, our lowest point throughout the year, who's the way we get our taxes and that kind of stuff, and we're always paying basically a half a year behind. Our lowest time is always November. So we have never short-term borrowed and I don't want to start short-term borrowing and that type of thing. So our last November, so twenty eighteen, our balance in November was one point seven. So that was our working capital. Now that's in C T Es, investments, that type of thing. But that's basically our working capital is one point seven at our lowest point. Currently, we're at a four-point level. But now we won't see payments, taxes, and state revenue and all that kind of stuff till actually next school year. So maybe we have to work off that money. So, so that's sort of a start. As you guys know, for the last probably five, six years, I've been squirreling away as much money as I could in Fund Forty-Six, which is our, our capital fund. That was the fund that we were able to start with a first dollar. And we were not able to touch that funds for five years. Doesn't matter when we put the funds in after that first dollar. It's just that first dollar you can't touch for five years. Anything you contribute to that just falls on the same time schedule. So like I said, we've, I've been squirreling away as much as I can there. Basically, the reason why we use Fund Forty-Six and not just leave it in our fund balance anymore or type of that is because we get aid out. It goes back to aid thing and that's your money back. So that's why we use Fund Forty-Six. And like I said, I've been squirreling as much as I could knowing that these projects were coming up. So tonight, I'm asking, and basically is approval for energy upgrades, roof replacement, solar upgrades. These are all not to exceed. So these are all maximums. So I told the, um, Kin Street, we're comfortable with the maximum. So you're not necessarily what we're gonna spend, but you've got maximum. Because depending on what lawyers we pick, there's cheaper ones, there's more expensive ones. But these are sort of our maximums. This is where our guidelines are going to fall. So for the energy upgrades, our maximum, uh, not to exceed, is eight hundred eighty thousand. I'm proposing using seven hundred thousand dollars out of Fund Forty-Six. We already have budgeted for this current year's budget, adding to Fund Forty-Six of fifty thousand dollars. So using those funds also. And a hundred thirty-eight thousand out of Fund Ten. The next two are sort of going hand in hand. If you guys decide you want to do solar, this, I, this is my personal opinion, this is the year I think you guys need to do it. Because I think the rebates are gonna be less than that. So the rebates really help the project make sense. So if you guys decide to do solar, that's why I am sort of proposing that that be our second priority over the roofs. Due to the fact that if you wait in our year, our, I think rebates are gonna be down or nil. So I'm proposing that we use four hundred three thousand, one hundred fifty-three dollars out of our fund pack, out of our fund balance. The next thing is our roof upgrades. I'm asking that we approve three hundred and thirty-seven thousand out of our restricted funds. So in our side of our fund balance, we have four thousand, four hundred thousand dollars designated strictly for roofs. They have to be used for roofs. We can't use the money for anything else. So I'm proposing that we do that. I would like you guys to give me permission to defer the roofs, if need be, based on the previous two items to twenty twenty-one, summer of twenty twenty-one. Just so that I'm comfortable with not having to make our Fund Ten too tight. At the end of this school year, I'll know a lot more. So when our, when we finish out this school year and that kind of stuff in June, I'll be able to come back and say, uh, we can maybe squeeze it in, in this year. Our roofs are not leaking. Our roofs are not, I'll say, in dire need. They are all warranty. Um, there is no more warranty on them. We had them first put on. They had the warranty. We had them quoted. They gave us an additional ten-year warranty. So there is no warranties anymore.
Excuse me, Jason. Do I understand you that you're saying you, you don't wanna put any money in the roof fund this, this year? Or what? Am I misunderstanding what you're saying?
I'm saying that I'd like you guys to approve the project for this, this month with the understanding that in June, I will tell you guys, hey, we're good and I don't worry about short-term borrowing. And/or with the prospect of proposing it, push it off to twenty twenty-one.
Did you catch all that, Dave?
No, I'm having a hard time understanding you. I don't know if you're not speaking into the speaker or what, but just answer me yes or no. Are you saying we're not putting money in the roof fund this year or are we, are gonna?
That, that's not what he's, um, he's asking. He's basically wanting to get our permission to, if need be, in the budget, to defer the roof repairs to twenty twenty-one. That's all he's saying. He's, um, that four hundred thousand dollars that's in the restricted fund, he's not talking about doing anything different with that. He was, he was asking that he be given the leeway to wait till June to see how the budget looks and determine whether we do it in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one.
But we're still gonna put money in the roof fund this year.
I don't think, Dave, so the, the, the roof fund, it wouldn't be that we're putting anything into it. We already have the money there for it. All he wants to do is buy some time until June to say, we have, we're in the right position to either do the project this summer or we're not in the right position 'cause we don't want a short-term borrow and we're just gonna do it in twenty twenty-one. So it's really not whether we're putting money into it. We already have the money there. It's just, when does it make financial sense to go ahead with that project? Is that better?
Yeah, no, I can understand what you're saying, but I, I just having a hard time understanding, Jason. I'd ask that you speak into your speaker better, maybe.
Yep. We'll get, we'll get him over here. It's a long way of translation.
Jason, I.
Still.
Jason, I.
I, I don't object to that, but I, I still think every year we need to put money in a roof fund because roofs deteriorate every year, whether you do them or not.
Oh, he's, he's, he's not saying that we're gonna stop putting money in our roof fund. What we're saying is, the amount that's in there now, we just want to make sure that coupled with where we are financially at the end of this school year, makes sense. So we're always going to put money into our roof fund 'cause that's been a staple of the school board for as long as I've been here. So you guys always have done that. We're not asking to change any of those practices. All we're simply asking is, can we get some time to come back and say, here's where we're at? So we don't go and short-change ourself.
Okay.
Jason, my, my question that I have for you on that is in, while it makes sense from a financial perspective and making sure you have it, from a bidding perspective, does that give us a problem if we wait too late into the season and all of the roofing companies have pretty much filled their dance card for, for the summer? And the price we get is a rather, rather steep one?
Good question. So we have not actually gone through the big process of the roof yet just because it's winter and no one's really, we have done the bidding part. So they have not, correct me if I'm wrong, but they have sent out, okay, they have not sent out the R P's or anything like that for the roof projects because we can't have inspections and cores done on the roof currently right now.
Right, forty-five degrees seems to be a magic temperature that nothing happens below that.
Buy me the months that I need to be able comfortably, and this is me being conservative, comfortably come back and saying, hey, we're good and we're just gonna do it. So just by the fact of it being winter and they have been able to, you know, do that process, that buys me a couple of months till we get closer to our, end of our budget year. I truly believe that I will come back to you and say, uh, we're fine. I just don't want to get into trouble.
You don't wanna tell us you're fine if you're not, huh?
Correct. Exactly. And that's really.
I appreciate that honest.
That's pretty much what, really what it is. So really, I'm being conservative. I don't wanna short-change ourselves. That's really what it is.
Okay. Any further clarification?
Oh, and just one more thing. Dave, we're always gonna use Fund Forty-Six from now on. And that's where we're gonna do all our capital projects out of, including roofs, just so that we get aid on the money.
Did you hear that, Dave?
I don't think.
Yes, I, yes, I, I heard that if I understood you right, you're saying you're putting a roof fund into Fund Forty-Six as long as we know how much of that is towards the roofs. That's my concern. My concern is that we put money every year towards roofs because we didn't do that in the past. And I'm talking twenty years ago. And then when we had to do something, you had to scramble for the money. And I firmly believe a roof is an expense. Even though you don't, don't do it every year, you gotta put money away for it every year.
Absolutely. And what Jason was just saying is if we use Fund Forty-Six, we're able to get aid on it. So it, it makes it even better. So.
Okay. As long as we hear, as long as we keep track of what's in there for roofs.
Alright, he's nodding.
You taught us many lessons, Dave. We won't forget that one.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright. Anything else, Jason?
Not that, no. If there's any questions.
Okay, we will move on to special ed report and Pathfinder update. Katie.
Alright, for special ed, I had a couple handfuls of parents interested in doing the parent group. So we are having our first meeting on Thursday, which I'm pretty excited about. It'll be just parents with disabilities being able to connect with each other. And I'm really just hoping that they'll be able to form some good relationships and get information that otherwise we haven't been able to have and get other questions answered that they needed. We're looking at meeting monthly, so I'm really looking forward to that. It'll be good. Our second part of our audit is currently happening. It's a parent survey for D P I. So I sent out the letters last week of information. So we need to get as many parents as we can to take that survey on D P I. Um, so we need to get as many parents as we can to take that survey on DPI. Um, I think we have a requirement of ten, but I'd like to get a lot more than that. Just to kinda see where we're at with special ed and if they're pleased with how things are going. Um, special ed field trips this week. We have some of the elementary students going to the Widener Center on Wednesday. Um, they have been going through a book about a small owl, and I know there's a live show there Wednesday. Going along with the book, so they're excited about that. And then the high school is going to Surgeon Bay, yeah, there's a one or Green Bay East on Friday. Oh, a dog. Don't even know. Wolf, wild. So, that's good fun. I'm gonna try to that. Um, Pathfinder's been out and about quite a bit the last couple of weeks. Um, they went to Paul's Camp Tree in Green Bay, uh, three times to help fill the shelves there, which the kids seem to really enjoy. Um, they've been at the YMCA in Surgeon Bay volunteering with gym class. Um, I think that's a lot of the homeschool kids go to gym class at the Y. So, they've been helping out with that. Most of them enjoying that. And then on last Friday, we went to the Oshkosh Prison, um, which is always interesting. Um, they got to speak to three different prisoners there, or they shared stories. Just kind of talked a lot about respect and what got them in prison. Um, they, all three of them came from very different backgrounds. One was an only child with very well-off parents. Told this story about just decisions he made and taking advantage of, um, you know, his parents loving him a lot and trusting him too much. And then some had come from the streets of Milwaukee, so, um, it's always a good experience for the kids who haven't experienced it before. Some of them got really excited because they have a dog training program at that prison, which is really cool. They train dogs for people with PTSD. Um, so they brought one of the puppies in so the kids could, um, you know, watch how they trained them and some of the commands that they know. So, that was really cool. And, um, last but not least, they are going to be starting the sewing class with Ms. Malone next month. So, there's some mixed reviews on that, but I think it's gonna be pretty great. They have to come up to the high school for it, though, so.
Okay. All sounds good. Questions or comments for Katie?
I have to say, Katie spoke at the Optimus in January. She did a wonderful job.
All right.
It's a tough crowd.
It's a tough crowd, yes.
All right, Liv Elgoma monthly update. Teal is not available, so you're gonna give us sort of a synopsis?
I'll give you a synopsis of the three-page report that she gave me. Um, but before I go through that, um, wanna recognize Amanda. So, Amanda is our community youth advocate. You've heard me talk about all the great work that she's been able to do so far as part of the district. Um, and glad she's here just to put a name to a face, so certainly appreciate all your hard work and all the things you do for our kids, so, thank you. Just, uh, you guys can read along. I'm just gonna do the highlights, the what matters, stuff, uh, that we've put together. Obviously, we've added the whole bullet point section for, uh, different parts of our demographics that we serve. Hopefully, that all makes sense. Yes, we are, uh, asking you guys to take a look at it, check for any mistakes. I know John has always done a good job of that. Um, we will get all those, uh, ironed out and ready for, uh, sending it all out. Tanya Kaviki Mills, our onsite mental health therapist, and Joan Gressel from UWGB. Um, they're teaming up and training a few of our staff in the wellness circles, training offered through the Samaritan Family Wellness Foundation. Obviously, um, Tanya and Joan and many others actually have been collaborating a lot on, um, how we address mental health in our school. Just proactive ways of doing that, again, kudos to them. Wolf Den received another year of funding from basically its giving partnership. Um, it's a significant, uh, amount of funding, if you remember, um, over a hundred thousand dollars a year. Amanda, who I just introduced, off, uh, is going to Wolf Den, um, so she can build her scope and influence down there. We have a learning summit set up for May eleventh through the thirteenth at Lambo Field. Um, obviously, you've probably heard Teal and I talk about this. Um, we have a large funder, um, that will help drive this in US Venture. So, all of the board members are invited. Monday, May eleventh, we'll have kind of a meet and greet at night. Uh, May twelfth will be a learning day at Lambo, and then May thirteenth will be a tour of Algoma. So, along with that tour, uh, for the learning summit attendees, they'll also have fifty individuals from the Wisconsin Idea Tour that will be here the same exact day. So, those are UW Madison faculty, um, that will be on their basic tour. Um, we've talked about this before, so, um, while we thought that was gonna be a problem, I think it's really a great thing to illustrate kind of how we do things and, um, the impact that we do have on our s- um, students and our staff. It's a busy week. The next day, we've been asked to speak in Topeka, Kansas, um, about our use of county health rankings and certainly how we go about things. They will have their lieutenant state governor, commissioner of Kansas education. So, I know sometimes people give us some grief about what does this have to do with education. I think we are a model for how this is connecting the pieces of what we do in education. And certainly, other states are recognizing that. The next one is, uh, we just applied, we sent in, um, our two twenty twenty All-American City Award. Um, we were strongly, strongly, strongly encouraged from our national partners to apply for that. Um, it has a whole host of things that come along with it. And you'll know by the end of February if we are finalists. If I'm reading through the lines just on how many times we were asked to apply, I think we will be. So, there's a lot of things that go along with that. Probably, first and foremost, it's always nice to be recognized as an All-American City for the very work that we do. Um, and just as, again, a testament that we are in fact working hard at providing opportunities for everyone in our community, regardless of where they come from, and we take pride in that, so.
Nick, on the, um, on the summit...
Yes.
Are we going to be inviting the county, um, oh, folks who support us with, you know, the, we have the sheriff's department, police department, we have the county health, um, public health folks that help us with a lot of our special programs. Are they going to be included with this at all?
Through the learning summit?
Yeah.
Um, they may. They, they might be able to sign up, but the, the direction that it's going is that US Venture actually wants to fund other communities to attend so that we would be able to, um, at the end of that, decide which ones are gonna go on a journey for three to five years. So, we have limited the participation in that whole summit to fifty people. So, it's possible that some of them that do work for Kewanee County and other entities will be involved in it. But the lion's share of the people that will be there will be communities from northeast Wisconsin that are ready to take the next step on the journey. So, it's not necessarily us bringing in all of our partners and showing them. It's more of, here's kind of our story and how we did things. And we have a, obviously, a large funder that is very interested in using this model moving forward. So, that's most of the attendees there.
I just wanted to...
But they will be, if they're, after that event, will be when a lot of those resources will get matched up. So, for instance, we have met with the Chief Brown County, 'cause they're a Culture of Health prize finalist. So, we are meeting with them again, um, to talk with them about steps that they may wanna take so that they can, you know, realize the impact of that award, so. Yes, and...
Yes, and...
So, it's a, an event, um, but it's something that will expand after it's done. Um, our hope is that we get three to five communities that are gonna be in it for the long haul. But then, the learning summit will be an annual event where then those communities then come back and we will do the very thing that you're saying is, look at all these partners that we have here and the great things here, and how do we build a learning collaborative?
Right, and I, I was thinking that, you know, they, they may understand one piece of it, and maybe even two pieces of it, but I'm not sure that they understand the whole, the whole program and the breadth of it.
Yeah.
And I thought this might be an opportunity for them to understand a little bit better how important their contributions are to it as well.
Absolutely. Hopefully, I did that justice.
And I want to just give a preview to our community of the, um, document we are working on, um, which we are calling Measures That Matter. Um, we talked about testing a little bit earlier in this meeting and how we do not feel that necessarily the test scores or the school report cards or some of the things that are mandated that, um, don't fit every child and don't fit every district and certainly don't recognize all the different things that we're doing. We decided we wanted to make sure that our community, our taxpayers, our, um, parents, our grandparents, everyone that's in the community, um, recognizes what we are doing, what's important to our district, what, um, we feel are the measures that really, um, appropriately show what we're doing and our progress. So, um, we are going to be doing a mailing to everybody, and we are working on it very carefully. And it's based as, um, as everything in districts starts with board goals. And so, it, it lists the different goals, which I will just briefly say. The first one is high student achievement. The second one is thriving workforce. The third one is opportunity for all. The fourth one is fiscal responsibility. And the fifth one is community and world connections. Now, underneath those headings is how we define those. And then through this, um, mailing, it will show how we are meeting them or attempting to meet them or our progress in them. And we're very proud of it. I mean, I think we just wanted to show the community in a way that everybody could understand and feel extra proud of all the things we are doing because we are getting national and world recognition for some of these things that we are doing in little Algoma. And, um, we wanna make sure everybody feels as proud about it as, um, as we do and, um, and understands the measures that we are using in terms of our success and our students' success. And, um, because there is huge success happening every day in this district that is not measured in any standardized test. So, that's my preview of great things to come. So, that'll be a mailing when it's all, um, proofed and, and we're getting close to that. I think we're hoping to mail it out in March. So, that will go to every single person. So, all right. Um, committee reports. We had a student safety committee.
So, we met, um, February fourth, and Nick brought to our attention, um, a member of random agreement with the city of Algoma. They have a school resource officer. So, if you wanna share what, um...
So, we've been talking about this for, for quite some time. This MOU would be, um, from now until the end of school. And the notion of the pilot is to look at what works best for all involved, try different things, um, and then come back in June, July and say, is this something that we want to go forward with? So, um, I think the MOU is something that we can build off of. Um, I don't think it's etched in stone. I think it gives us some general guidelines. I know from the committee, um, I share some of the same concerns about, we wanna build relationships. We want to, um, have an officer that's in working with our kids. That's a positive thing, not a punitive thing, that, uh, they just don't become familiar with somebody in a, um, uniform coming in and handing out tickets. That's not the point of this. So, um, I, I'm comfortable in using it as a pilot to understand what we need, try different things. And I think we talked about it in our measuring what matters. It's the right people at the right time for the right purpose. Um, I think we have excellent officers that are, are willing to take that on. And I think we can develop, um, something that everybody involved is happy with. Do I think that we need a full-time forty hours a week? Absolutely not. But, um, do I think there's a space? Yes. How we, um, define that moving forward kinda rests on the next three months. And I think we have some things to learn, um, and some things to try. And I don't think there's any harm in that, so, um, I think that, not speaking for the committee, but I think we were all in agreement that coming back in June and July and kind of assessing what all took place and what worked and what didn't, and then, um, sitting down and deciding if we want to proceed, um, or not, so.
So...
Julian, speaking for the committee, are you recommending...
So, we are recommending the pilot program. It'll start in March through the end of the school year. So, it's a short period, but it will give us a good sample of what the possibilities are for, uh, that in our, in our schools.
And I think...
Madam President, I'd like to speak to this?
Yes.
Go ahead, Dave.
What is the police force doing now that's positive, uh, to find this information out on their own?
What, what are they doing right now?
Yeah. Are they coming in? There, there's, uh, I understand there's three officers working in Algoma most, most of the day?
I don't know.
Do we ever, do we ever have an officer just, just come into school and talk to the kids? Or come out on the playground and talk to them? Or come to a football game and talk to them, not in a supervisory capacity, but just to get to know, know their student population? Is that happening now on their own?
Yeah, that, that's happening now, Dave. Um, there's, uh, I would say there's probably considerable involvement at Wolf Den. I would say during the school day, it's a little bit more limited. But I do, you know, I give credit to the officers. They pop in and, um, talk to us as, as much as it used to be. No. But I, they are stopping in, they are checking in. But those are all things that I think we can use in the pilot study and say, hey, we need you to be at these things. Or, um, is this really, you know, are we getting our best bang for our buck on, on this? So, um, you know, I, I know what you're getting at, Dave. And I think we just have to define, um, what is happening so that we all have the same common understanding. Because some people view it as that should be part of normal operations, where they come up here and they visit with kids. Others are not, um, on that line of thinking. So, um, I would like to see a little bit more structured approach to it. I would like to see, um, all the complimentary things of an SRO position.
Well, and I think this, um, trial, this very short trial, gives us the opportunity to basically have our input very strongly in what we are looking for and see, um, if it works.
How many dollars are we allowing to that?
Uh, Jason and I, we're, it's less than probably four thousand dollars.
Between now and the end of the year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably significantly less, actually. It's hardly nothing. So, it's not... I don't wanna say money, money's not a factor, but it's not a private thing.
But the goal, goal of, the police force came to us, or did we go to them?
Well, I think this is a couple of years in the making. It started off on a different kind of flavor, where they wanted us to share an SRO with another district, and then things happened, and then we got a new police chief, so... So it's been in the works for quite some time. So that's where we're at.
I, I guess I, I'm willing to try it till the end of the year, but I'm not, I'm not really sold on it. I listened to three different programs put on by the University of Wisconsin and, and the speaker that they have on it. And all three of them programs, there was no positive proof that having a police officer on the payroll in school did anything to prevent school shootings or violence in the school. Now, taking care of mental health, instead of that, uh, they felt was a better expenditure of your funds. We're only talking a few dollars now, but if that would turn into, say, a halftime position where it would cost us 30, 40, $50,000 a year, I would need a lot of selling on it.
So we all would.
So would we.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, I think we're, we're all on the same page there. I think we're all comfortable with this little trial to see if it's even something we want to pursue.
And I've done a fair amount of questioning people out in the country on this and pretty much leaning to what I'm, how I felt about it. But I'm, I'm willing to go along with it till the end of the year, I guess, to try it out, so.
Okay, it is one of our action items. So we'll be voting on that in a little, in a short time, so. Any other questions, comments on that?
Yes, I got one more.
Okay.
I would feel much more comfortable if that officer was coming from the county and not the city, where the whole district would have some input on, on. When it comes from the city, us people in the country got nothing to say about it. If it's a county officer, everybody's got somebody's, something to say about it.
That's an, that's an interesting point. Yes, I hear ya.
And I went through this once before, about 15 years ago, maybe 20 years ago with a police chief. And, and it, it was a problem when it was just the city of Algoma. So, and I don't, I'm not saying it because I got any bones to pick with a police chief in Algoma, I don't know him. That's not why I'm saying it. I, I'm just want to prevent any problems from happening and that, and let you know how I feel about it, so.
Well, and you have the benefit of experiencing it before, Dave, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anything else from anybody? Okay, um, other specific items for discussion, we have the board mini-retreat to schedule. I believe, Dave, you had offered to host it.
Yes, I will.
And I think was March 19th the, a date that you were looking at? I'd like to propose that is a Thursday.
Oh.
And.
And the first day of spring.
Is it the first day of spring?
That's what my calendar says.
I think we're thinking like a 5:00 PM start. Any?
Whatever you want's fine with me.
I could even go earlier, I got that day off.
Oh, do you?
Oh. Starting my semi-part-time, you know, my semi-retirement.
Um, Dave would, well, what, in terms of like four o'clock, that would probably be more convenient for the staff?
Whatever's good for Dave.
Jason is going to be at a conference.
Until.
So if you're okay with him not being there for, for a little bit of it, I'd certainly think five o'clock start would allow him some more travel time to make it back.
Okay. All right. So why don't we say five o'clock on the 19th, Dave? And we usually try and keep these things contained to about a, a three-hour window to get people home. So.
5:00 PM.
5:00 PM on the 19th.
Okay.
Of March, all right.
Did you want to have any discussion about what you expect from the administrators for that?
I think, um, I had mentioned to Nick, I want, probably in terms of this coming year, or this retreat, I'd like to focus a little bit more on organizational goals for this next year, not as much on reporting of things. I know we use it as a forum to bring in some new ideas that we heard at conference and things like that, which we can certainly try and fit in for, you know, a, a little piece of it. But I, I think it'll be a little bit more of a working, a working retreat. We probably won't have as wide an audience coming. I think in the past, part of our reason for having a little wider audience at it was to make sure we all really were understanding what we were doing and when we were defining our goals and things like that. But I think this time it'll be sort of, again, applying our goals to the action of, in an organizational way. So I can try and put thoughts a little bit more clearly down on paper and get that out to everybody. Okay? All right. Okay, moving on to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of January 27th, 2020, the student safety committee meeting minutes of February 4th, 2020, and the special school board meeting minutes of February 5th, 2020.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion by, by John, seconded by Joanne. Questions or discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills that were in your packet as well as those presented to us tonight.
All move.
Motion made by Ann, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mick. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the 2020-2021 CISA 8 service agreement in the amount of $20,520.
Also move.
Motion made by Joanne, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ann. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none?
I do want to point out on that it's for hearing impaired students. We may get ourselves in a position to do a 660301 agreement with another school district because of incoming students. So it might be more efficient and cost-effective to do that 66031 agreement because we'll then have enough individuals in this area so we can do that. So if that pans out, this agreement's not due until the end of March, it would certainly let you know, but it would only be if it was more cost-effective.
Okay.
So just so you're aware of that.
All right, so shall we modify the motion to approve it if it is more cost-effective?
No, I don't.
Doesn't matter? You just need to.
Because it would be a separate thing.
Okay, we'd have to have a separate one. You just wouldn't follow through with it. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve first agency insurance for school day coverage.
Aye, so moved.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, motion by Dave, seconded by Joanne. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with the city of Algoma for this trial period.
Also move.
Okay, motion made by Mick.
I'll second.
Seconded by Joanne. Questions or discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Abstain. Abstain.
Okay, I have one abstain. I need a motion to approve the $500 ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Program donation from Forestville One Stop.
So moved.
I have a motion by John, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joanne. That's always nice to get these donations. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. These next three, Dave, are going to be related to the upgrades and replacements. So they will all be roll call votes. Once I get a motion and a second, I will start with you on roll call, all right, Dave?
Yes.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the energy upgrades not to exceed $888,000.
I'll move.
Motion made by Ann, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Oh, second by Dave, roll call vote, Dave?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Also say yes, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the roof replacement not to exceed $337,000.
Also move.
Motion made by Joanne? Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, seconded by John.
I was thinking maybe Dave would second it.
Roll call vote, Dave?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Also say yes. And I need a motion to approve the solar upgrade not to exceed $403,153.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made by John, seconded by Ann. Roll call vote, Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Ann?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
Ann? Also say yes. I, um, any requests for future agenda items? All right, then I need a motion to go on.
There was, there's an item in the newspaper today that I looked at and I wondered what we would do about it. And it had to do with First Amendment rights supporting Second Amendment rights in the form of T-shirts.
T-shirts, yeah.
T-shirts.
Oh, related to that, that child that came to school with a gun on their T-shirt?
Right.
Oh.
It, it looked convoluted enough for maybe us to maybe take a look at it.
Yeah, I guess there's, yeah.
What is our, what does our dress code say and, you know, will we eventually be in khaki slacks and, you know, polo shirts or?
I think it allows us the, to set a standard.
That's what Paul Harvey used to say now for the rest of the story. I think that has something to do with.
Yeah.
Certainly these situations that are happening. Because I think policy-wise, I think it's actually pretty clear what you can and cannot do. I think there's some personal liberties taken, which I think is where the students suing and things like that is coming back to bite them in the butt. But we actually take some guidance from Tinkerware San Antonio. There's a case law about students representing or choosing to wear certain things, but the threshold is whether or not it causes a substantial disruption.
Of education.
Education, right? So is a student wearing a Second Amendment shirt substantial disruption to your learning That's why you get paid the big bucks, I guess.
But it could be a discussion.
Right, absolutely. And I, I think it's very much a, a great discussion. I think a case that would, that we've had here is when our students chose to buck out, right? And I remember many other school districts handling that very differently than we did. And I think the outcome of that was our students did it, they were respected, they respected us in return, they came back to class.
All good.
All good. I'd like to say that's how that would be handled, but I can certainly get the NEOL stuff for you so that we can look at it and say, how would we begin to walk down that line if somebody would say, well, you're, you know.
Restricting our rights.
Denying my rights to, you know, First Amendment or Second Amendment, whatever. So I think it's all about process. I think it's all about the rest of the story.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's, it's getting a little nerve-wracking being on a school board after the Baraboo presentation and then reading paper today in terms of, you know, what is the appropriate path to respect the First Amendment rights of, of students as well as absolute.
So we can maybe have it as a discussion item. So maybe in our packet, you could have a copy of our current NEOL policy relating to it and then we can have a discussion.
Then we can kick it around a little bit.
Sounds good. Any others? Okay, then I will go. I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin statute 19.85 subsections 1CEFNI for the purpose of helping matters hires, staffing, and resignations.
I so moved.
Motion made by Joanne.
I'll second.
Seconded by John, roll call vote, Dave?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
I also say yes.